People with asthma may be at higher risk of getting sick from COVID-19. COVID-19 can affect your respiratory tract, cause an asthma attack, and possibly lead to pneumonia and acute respiratory disease. The best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to the virus. Take your asthma medicine exactly as prescribed. Talk to your healthcare provider, insurer, and pharmacist about creating an emergency supply of prescription medicines such as asthma inhalers. Make sure that you have 30 days of non-prescription medications and supplies on hand too, in case you need to stay home for a long time. Please visit floridahealth.gov and the CDC websites to stay informed. The Florida Department of Health wants you to beware of the invisible enemy, COVID-19. The coronavirus can stay alive on hard surfaces, so what does that mean? Bars, food courts, tables, doorknobs, door handles, toilet handles, keyboards, many things you touch every day is a place the virus can hide out. You then touch it and bring it inside your household or to someone that may not be able to recover if they get COVID-19. This is why you need to be extremely careful about your gatherings and why it's so important to wash your hands often. It may be difficult, but it's necessary. Doing the responsible thing will save lives. Please visit floridahealth.gov and the CDC websites to stay informed. You may be wondering if the COVID-19 virus can be spread through drinking water. The COVID-19 virus has not been detected in drinking water. Conventional water treatment methods that use filtration and disinfection, such as those in most municipal drinking water systems, should remove or inactivate the virus that causes COVID-19. Many of you may be wondering if the COVID-19 virus can spread through pools and hot tubs. Well, there's no evidence that COVID-19 can be spread to humans through the use of pools and hot tubs. Proper operation, maintenance, and disinfection of pools and hot tubs should remove or inactivate the virus that causes COVID-19. The Florida Department of Health wants to make sure you're checking in on your loved ones. If you have a family member or friend in an assisted living facility, senior living facility, nursing home, or adult care program, make sure everything is being done to keep them safe from COVID-19. Speak with your loved one and get a good idea of what's going on. Ask staff about what they're doing to protect everyone. They should be doing daily temperature and symptom screening for everyone in and out of the location. Please visit floridahealth.gov and the CDC websites to stay informed. The Florida Department of Health encourages you to take the necessary steps to keep your home clean. Right now, there are no disinfectant products registered by the EPA for use on environmental surfaces that are specifically listed as having the ability to kill COVID-19. However, related viruses that have similar physical and biochemical properties can be killed with bleach, ammonia, or alcohol, or cleaning agents containing many of these disinfectants. Clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and hard surfaces using a regular household cleaning spray or wipe. Cleaning agents should be used according to the manufacturer's instructions. A list of EPA-approved cleaning products can be found on the following websites. If you have a hard time finding the list, email DOH Hillsborough PIO@FLHealth.gov.
The Florida Department of Health is working around the clock to identify those who are most at risk of contracting COVID-19. We are prioritizing testing. For any individual who is symptomatic, fever, cough, shortness of breath, and has traveled through an area of community spread, we encourage them to contact their medical provider. Please don't self-diagnose. Describe the symptoms that you are having, work with your provider, and if your provider feels that you meet the criteria for COVID-19 testing, they can coordinate through one of the commercial labs, LabCorp or Quest. There's a two-step process, which includes a specimen collection kit and then a test kit. The specimen collection kit includes the swabs and the sputum culture that are collected from the patient, which are then sent to the lab where the testing kit is housed. The testing kit includes reagents, which are basically chemicals that run the tests to prove whether the person is positive or negative for COVID-19. We encourage social distancing because it is very easy to spread through droplet transmission, meaning if someone coughs or sneezes near you and you breathe that aerosolized matter in, you are now possibly infected with the virus. We want to isolate the sick for 14 days because that's typically the duration of this virus. At the end of the 14 days, if they are symptom-free, then they have the potential of testing negative for the virus. But they do have a clearance process for those individuals. For the latest information on the COVID-19 virus, we encourage everyone to visit the Florida Department of Health and the CDC websites.
The Florida Department of Health understands that some of you may be concerned about your pets. The CDC has not received any reports of pets or other animals contracting COVID-19. However, it is always a good precaution to wash your hands after touching an animal. People with COVID-19 are asked to limit interaction with pets and other animals. Specifically, while they are symptomatic, they should maintain separation from pets as they would with any household members and avoid direct contact with pets, including petting, snuggling, being kissed or licked, and sharing food. Please visit floridahealth.gov and the CDC websites to stay informed. The length of time that COVID-19 survives depends on factors. These factors include the type of material or body fluid containing the virus and various environmental conditions such as temperature or humidity. Researchers at the CDC and other institutions are designing standardized experiments to measure how long COVID-19 can survive in situations that simulate natural environmental conditions. So until more is known, clean often, especially high-touch surfaces. This is a stressful time for everyone, including children. Provide your children with opportunities to talk about their feelings. Regardless of your child's age, he or she may feel upset and have other strong emotions. Encourage them to share their concerns and ask questions. The following websites have more information on this topic. You can also email DOH Hillsborough PIO@FLHealth.gov. The length of time that COVID-19 survives depends on factors. These factors include the type of material or body fluid containing the virus and various environmental conditions such as temperature or humidity. Researchers at the CDC and other institutions are designing standardized experiments to measure how long COVID-19 can survive in situations that simulate natural environmental conditions. So until more is known, clean often, especially high-touch surfaces. Hi, my name is Kevin Watler, and I'm the Public Information Officer for the Florida Department of Health in Hillsborough County. Florida Department of Health has joined Nextdoor to share information and updates that have direct impact on your neighborhoods. Let me assure you that your Nextdoor neighborhood conversation remains private to you and your neighbors. We only will be able to see your replies and posts in private messages that you send directly to us. It's our plan to keep you informed. It's important to prepare your household for the coronavirus. COVID-19 cases continue to increase around the state. A coronavirus outbreak could last for a long time, and we recommend a two-week supply of prescription and over-the-counter medications, food, and other essentials. Also, know how to get food delivered if possible. Having a household plan can help protect your health and the health of those you care about. The following websites have more information on this topic. You could also email DOH Hillsborough PIO@FLHealth.gov. The Florida Department of Health wants you to protect your family and friends from COVID-19. We are all at risk of transmitting the coronavirus to someone who may not be able to recover if they get it. It's important to understand that people who are older and those with medical conditions such as blood disorders, chronic kidney or liver disease, have a compromised immune system, a current or recent pregnancy, heart disease, lung disease, or a neurological condition are at highest risk for a bad outcome. Please visit floridahealth.gov and the CDC websites to stay informed. It's important to protect yourself when you go shopping. Wash your hands before and after going to the store. Shop at off-peak hours so it's easier to keep a distance from others. If you're over the age of 60, see if stores in your neighborhood are offering shopping exclusively for seniors. Don't touch something at the store and then touch your face. Use a sanitizing wipe to disinfect the shopping cart or basket handle. Many stores provide wipes, but you might want to come with your own supply just in case they're out. The Florida Department of Health, along with its partnering health and safety agencies, is reminding residents to stay vigilant and help stop the spread of COVID-19. People with confirmed or suspected COVID-19 who do not need to be hospitalized or those who were hospitalized and determined to be medically stable to go home should restrict activities outside their home except for getting medical care. Do not go to work or public areas. Avoid using public transportation, ride-sharing, or taxis. Be sure to separate yourself from other people or animals inside your home. You should stay in a specific room and use a separate bathroom if available. Call ahead before visiting your doctor. If you have an appointment, call the healthcare provider and tell them your symptoms. This will help the office take steps to keep other people from getting infected or exposed.
Here.
Hey.
Here.
Hannah.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Overman.
Here, and the video is not showing on Facebook update as of yet since the meeting has been opened.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you ever.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the commissioners for joining us on this conference call and staff being on the conference call and all of those that are either listening or watching it on Facebook. Members, put your phones on mute or I don't know how to handle that until you're recognized to speak. And to get recognized to speak, just let me know you want to speak and we'll put it in order that I hear people coming in. We all know the purpose for this meeting today, but let me say this before we get started. I have had a conversation with our legal team. They have got an interpretation from a ruling from the Attorney General's Office in Tallahassee about what I'm getting ready to do and say this is what I'm about to do is the proper way that we can handle this meeting. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a statement now. I am then going to make a motion. I'm going to turn the gavel over to the vice chair to make a motion. I hope to get a second to that motion. We would not as a board discuss that motion at this time. The vice chair will turn the gavel back over to me. We'll take public comment on the motion, on the motion only. At the end of the public comment, I'll give the gavel back to the vice chair where we can discuss the motion if we have a second to it. Take action on the motion, then we'll adjourn. And I got that interpretation from Mayor Ferris. Talked to Ms. Gleason in the Attorney General's Office, and she said that was a proper way we can handle this meeting today. We are here to talk about the one cent transportation system sales surtax ordinance and setting a public hearing possibly for April 15. We are in uncertain times. We have no idea of what's going to be happening in the future. We have no idea how long this pandemic is going to last. But one thing we do know is that it has hurt people. It has hurt people health-wise. It has hurt people life-wise. It has definitely hurt people financially. The day is April 1st, and there are people, their rent was due today, their mortgage payments were due today, their car payments were due today, the childcare services are due today, a lot of things are due today. And many of them cannot pay those things because they're unemployed. And guess what? As we go on with this pandemic, it's going to get worse, and more and more people are going to lose their jobs, and they're going to be in hardships. And we as a county commission took an oath to protect those in our county, where there's 1.4, 1.5 million. We took an oath that we have to protect those in life, limb, and financially. In doing that, now is not the time to be talking about raising a tax or raising fees. People are hurting financially. They are truly, truly hurting. I've been on the phone today with small business people trying to figure out what they can do to keep their stores open. And it hurts me to tell some of them, you can't. You can't do it. And I have them crying on my phone, and that hurts. And we as a county commission are going to eventually have to deal with our budgets. We don't know what it's going to be like. We don't know what our budget's going to do. We don't know where we're going to be standing. We don't know what we're going to be looking at in the upcoming budget year. We don't know if we're going to have to tap into reserves to help people. But people are going to be looking, the Hillsborough County government, especially county commissioners, to help them through this pandemic and all of the suffering that they're going through. Now is not the time for us to be talking about raising a tax or even raising fees. Now is not the time. So therefore, I'm making a motion today that we defer the one cent transportation sales tax upcoming public hearing until after January 1st, 2021. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion. As Commissioner Merman, I'll second that motion.
So vice chair, I'm taking this gavel back. I will turn it back over to you when we get to the point of discussing the motion. We're now going to move to public comment. And ladies and gentlemen, we have 28 people that have signed up for public comment. I do understand there were some that wrote their public comments to us, and the staff is going to get those to us. But those of you that are listening would now have a motion, and by the Attorney General's ruling, you must only address the motion that's on the floor. And that motion is that we defer the public hearing on the one cent transportation system sales surtax until after January 1st, 2021. The first speaker is Ron Weaver.
Good afternoon, Chairman Miller and Commissioners. My name is Ron Weaver, 4403 West Dale, and I have the pleasure of serving as co-chair of the Tampa Bay Chamber's Transportation Council. On behalf of our Board of Directors and our 1,400 members, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be heard. The chamber has long believed that an accessible, affordable, and connected transit system is what will ultimately propel our region forward. By 2024, Hillsborough County's population is expected to grow by nearly 9% far outpacing the growth of the state and of the nation. Simply put, the current transit and transportation system is not able to take care of that 9% growth. That system, that 9% growth, having championed the first transportation referendum, the chamber believes the business community...
Yes, sir. Hold on, Mr. Weaver. You're breaking up some kind of way. Just hold on a second. Some way, I'm getting, I'm getting a breaking up. If we're able to work that out, stop the clock. And also, members, ladies and gentlemen, there's a clock, three minutes. You'll hear a bing, a bing at 30 seconds, and you'll hear a bing when the time is up. But, Mr. Weaver, you're breaking up some kind of way. I don't know if it's our end or your end. So go ahead and start again, Mr. Weaver. How much time does he have left?
Two minutes and five seconds.
Pardon?
Two minutes and five seconds.
Okay, Mr. Weaver, you have two minutes and five seconds left. Excuse me for interrupting you, but you were breaking up, and I was missing part of what you were saying. But go ahead and proceed.
Is that better, Mr. Chairman?
That's better, thank you.
By 2024, Hillsborough County's population is expected to grow by nearly 9% far outpacing the growth rate of the state and the nation. Simply put, the current transit and transportation infrastructure funding sources are no longer adequate to keep pace with that level of growth. Having championed the first transportation referendum, the chamber believes the business community has a decisive role to play yet again. We cannot wait while our fate is decided in Tallahassee. Mr. Chairman, that is why I'd like to reiterate the chamber's support for a one cent transportation surtax and urge the commission to schedule a public hearing to consider its passage in two weeks on April 15. These remarks were prepared by the chamber leadership and are relayed to you. I understand that your motion would postpone, but the position of the Greater Tampa Chamber at the moment, until it hears more about your motion, Mr. Chairman, is that we reiterate the chamber's support for a 1% transportation surtax and urge the commission to schedule a public hearing to consider its passage in two weeks on April 15. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Next speaker is Mr. David McCannick.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is David McCannick. I'm here speaking as an interested citizen. I would like to echo Mr. Weaver's comments and urge the board to proceed with the one cent transportation surtax. We know that in 2018, a majority of the voters felt that we needed a new funding source to address our serious roadway backlog as well as our currently inadequate transit system. In light of that, and while I understand the uncertainty of the economic conditions, by putting this on a referendum, we are simply allowing the voters to make a decision. And I fully understand that some folks may not want to support the tax because of their economic situation. And that, of course, is our democratic system in this country. So all I'm really asking is for you to put this on for a referendum and let the voters decide whether or not they would like to impose this tax on themselves. And thank you very much. And I would urge the commission to proceed forward on April 15 and place this matter on the ballot. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. McCannick. Next speaker is Mr. William Mayday.
Commissioner Miller, William is not on the call. We are going to move to Linda.
Okay, next speaker is Linda, Ms. Linda Redmond.
Yes, this is Linda Raymond. Yeah.
We can hear you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear us?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chairman and board members. This is Linda Raymond with the Tampa Downtown Partnership, President and CEO, and I'm speaking behalf of our board, 250-member companies, 14,000 residents, and 58,000 employees in downtown. Tampa's downtown cultivated a prolific and private collaboration, and we encourage downtown's economic development process. Our organization has a long history of support for transportation and multimodal options. This includes micro-mobility services such as the Downtowner, Co-Spike Share, e-scooters, Zipcar, Cross Bay Ferry, and the Tico Line Streetcar. As a regional hub with massive population growth projections, our organization understands the value of investment in key capacity-building roads. The safety of our streets, especially for vulnerable users, is of utmost concern and must be addressed immediately. The partnership is in strong support of the All For Transportation campaign that was previously passed by our voters and actively promote and actively to promote what our constituents' needs are. Without funding that, our community will continue to lag in safety and economic development with long commute times and insufficient transit services. I'm here today asking for you to please support putting on the April, the public hearing on April 15 to move forward and to also consider putting this on the ballot for November so that we can proceed with business as usual. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Thomas Gaitens.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank you for your motion. Sandy, I'd like to thank you, Commissioner Merman, for your second. This is statesmanship on both of your parts and I hope by the rest of the commission at the end of this vote. It is imperative that we put the people first right now during these economically difficult times that are not caused because of a natural influx of economy but because of government decision-making to shutter businesses and put people out of work. This is the most desperate time people of any of these generations have probably experienced in their life. We have great uncertainty, and you're exactly right in your comments, Chairman. I would like to point out that not only should this be delayed, but I'd like to point out reasons why this tax should not go forward even in January when we do revisit this, hopefully. First and foremost is that South County, for instance, will have, according to the county's only, its only projections, is going to have more than 30 schools built between now and 2040. Twenty schools, I guess it is, out of the total. Not one of the roads that those schools are proposed to be built upon are scheduled to be widened or improved in any considerable way to increase potential traffic that's going to happen during that period of time. That's unconscionable. Imagine yourself a parent and having to wait in those lines. Or imagine yourself a commuter trying to have to wait in those lines and then increased traffic, yet 40% of this is going to be scheduled to go to heart, and not one dime is dedicated to new roads. Commissioners, I implore you to start considerations towards improving the roads, fix the roads first. It's the most important thing. 98% of the residents use the roads. Even if we build a rail system, which is the dream of many of you, less than 2% will use it. This is the most absurd use of public funds. This is the most absurd use of public funds, um, ever considered by a Board of County Commissioners. It's something you have to take deep consideration and understand that when you do this, you've just robbed people of the opportunity and ease by which they can commute back and forth to work and school. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Tom. Okay, we'll move on to, I know my message is last name, Edward Mizerzewski. Okay, Chris Beala.
Yes, I'm here. Um, yes, this is Chris Beala calling from Ybor, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, this is Chris Beala calling from Ybor City, three-three-six-zero-five. Um, Commissioner Miller, I first want to thank you for at least keeping this on the table. I know that there's been some differences in terms of moving this forward or delaying it, um, but I wanted to bring up some concerning issues right now. Um, we know that the will of the voters is absolutely important. It matters in our election system. However, I wanted to point out the fact that we are seeing a large amount of people driving less. Right now, currently, N-Rex is showing thirty-nine percent less driving in the state of Florida. Why is this important? It's because this hurts our gas tax. So we might see even more lower levels of driving, less people purchasing gas, and less gas tax being used in the state of Florida. Why does this matter? Well, Florida only puts out about, um, not, about ten billion dollars statewide to fund state projects. Uh, so these are state roads, interstate systems, and so forth. Part of that, though, does go towards grants for transit agencies. Part of that money goes for grants for counties and cities, so they can do local projects, but without having the money to back it up, to show the state, to show the federal government that we can hold our own, we're not going to have any money to do any capital improvements in two thousand twenty-one, and so on. And so, um, what's, what's going to end up happening is, on top of that, we are going to see a lot of economic impacts on people with car loans or car leasing and so forth. So, we're going to even see VMT drop even lower, uh, because of this. And so, what's going to end up happening is we're really going to run out of money. And right now, I can tell you that the ultimate I-4 project in Orlando is costing nine billion dollars right now because it's two projects, and it's sucking up all the money that could go to other cities, uh, for transfer projects and so forth. So it's extremely important that, um, you just, we take this in strong consideration to move it forward, and I know, I understand, and, and trust me, I know everybody on this board is working extremely hard to deal with this horrific pandemic, but we have to realize that we are going to lose a lot of traditional tax money in our transportation system, and we're going to lose a lot of plans that are on the table to make our roads safer and reduce the amount of crashes that we're seeing elsewhere. And before I wrap up, I just wanted to let you all know that we had three referendums passed last year at the same time AFT did pass. That was Collier County, Port St. Lucie, and Bauer County. The majority of those counties have a one percent, uh, surtax, and the majority of those counties were, uh, GOP-based, um, independent-based and Democratic-based, so it was across all-party lines. And so, they're going to be in a better position to compete for federal funding handed by the state. So, okay, I'm done.
Thank you. Uh, Richard, I'm sorry, Riley Richard. Riley Richard?
I just, I just want to make sure I'm heard. This is Tom Rask, and the system isn't working very well. I, I, so I'll mute myself again, but I want to make sure that I'm heard later. Thank you, Chairman.
You are, you were Speaker number six. He can go ahead. Speaker number six could go ahead. That was Tom.
Okay, Mr. Rask, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, and every time I mute or unmute, I can't hear what you're saying. I apologize. Um, thank you and good afternoon to everybody. I agree with what my friend Tom Gaiten said about widening the roads. However, I, I have to oppose this, um, motion because it cannot bind future commissions. It's simply, um, um, you know, it's a meaningless motion. Uh, instead, I urge the Commissions to vote no and simply take no action because it, it simply has no legal meaning. You cannot bind, um, a future commission. Um, as far as, um, the wisdom of any sales tax of this kind, and especially at this time, as I pointed out in an email to you all that I sent, um, earlier, uh, just before the meeting, there is a European Union study from two years ago that found that, quote, "Mass transportation systems offer an effective way of accelerating the spread of infectious diseases within communities," end quote. And that was authored by Panhub, which, uh, is, stands for Prevention and Management of High Threat Pathogen Incidents in Transport Houses, and that, again, was an EU-funded project. The combination of high population density and heavy use of transit are the two main reasons that, at New York City, as of this morning, has experienced over twenty-five percent of all coronavirus deaths in the U.S. Yet the majority of this commission continues to want to densify, to force people to use transit, and then tax them in order to impose, um, this oppression on them, because when you force people, you are, at least in a way, oppressing them. So, I urge you to, uh, not, um, to vote no on this, uh, motion, and just let the matter die. I also wanted to explain, even though this may not be the, the right time, I live in Pinellas County, and the reason I'm involved in Hillsborough transportation issues, well, you can thank former Tampa Mayor Bob Buckhorn for that, because I work very hard and, and I'm, this is related to the motion here.
Um, Tom, you have to...
This is related to the motion. I, I am trying to, Chairman Miller. Um, I want you all to understand why there is such intense interest in these transportation issues, and that is because on the day Greenlight Pinellas, on the evening Greenlight Pinellas was defeated in two thousand fourteen, uh, Mayor, then Mayor Buckhorn said about any future transportation plan that it's got to include rail. It's just got to include rail. And that is really, um, that was quite remarkable in its disregard for the will of the voters. So what I've heard here for several years is, in Hillsborough, they'll say, if it passes in Pinellas, we'll pass it in Hillsborough, and vice versa. So, for the third time, uh, I urge you to vote no on this and just let the issue die. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is Riley Richards on the phone? Riley Richard? Okay, um, Rob Brower? Karen Jeroch? Karen Jeroch?
Karen, you are unmuted.
Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on. Sean Yuski? Nancy Daly? Nancy Daly? Angela Urbina? Angela Urbina? Moving on. Danny Kusmer? Danny Kusmer, K-U-S-H-M-E-R? Ralph Taylor? Moving on. Mac Major Maxim? Mac Major Maxim? Moving on. Chris Easter? Chris Easter? Moving on. Ann Kettler? Ann Kettler? Moving on. Raymond Kettler? Raymond Kettler? Moving on. Josephine Amato? Josephine Amato?
Commissioners?
Moving on. Yes?
No. Commissioners, can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I don't know why that wasn't working.
Go ahead. You're recognized.
I apologize. Um, I just wanted the Commissioners to know, I'm hearing, um, feedback from some people that have been in... Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, so my name is Josephine Amato. I'm the director of Safe Bus for Us, a local, involved advocate for students with safe routes to school. Our school buses are the largest in the public transportation area and a vital public resource during public emergencies, with eleven fuel sites, eight hundred and eighty-eight drivers, one thousand two hundred and seventy-six buses, and the ability to reach over twenty thousand stops in a single day. Those very buses and drivers are handing out food at hundreds of stops beginning today. I have become a very involved local leader and in the area of transportation in our area and South and East Counties especially. As important as our pedestrian death rates and congestion and transportation issues are, I believe this needs to wait in the best...
Christopher Strandberg is the next one that's actually in.
Excuse me, somebody that have their phone on mute? Stop the clock for Mr. Amato. Hold on, Mr. Amato, hold on. Someone has, does not have their phone on mute. Please put your phone on mute. Continue, Mr. Amato.
Thank you so much. I believe I support the motion, can you hear, I believe, I support the motion for this to wait until as, after we deal with this national emergency. Even if you believe you're within your rights, this vote will forever be tainted as non-inclusive if we don't wait until everyone can participate at the public meeting. It is best to ensure it is done in complete sunshine where equal access is assured through both physical and presence and virtual, where all of our residents who aren't fluent in English and who are visually and hearing impaired are insured proper notification. Our community is occupied with daily survival needs, health restrictions, and vital services to work. We have hospital workers, we have our military, everyone's focused on the national emergency. When we make it through this crisis and there's a new tax on, that's voted on, you will lose the trust of your voters. You risk losing a great deal of trust with little gain. I ask the Commission to table this issue until we get through this crisis as together as a community. All of our attention and focus and resources should be focused on ensuring our community makes it through this pandemic united together. As a deeply involved transportation advocate, I ask for all of you to unite as one on the mission of getting us through this national emergency. I always look forward to working with our county committees in the best interests of our community, and I truly appreciate your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nicholas Glover. Nicholas Glover? Moving on. Michael Green? Michael Green? Moving on. Carla Kitty? Carla Kitty? Moving on. Christopher Strandberg?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Christopher Strand? Yes, okay, go ahead, sir.
Excellent. Uh, good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Christopher Strandberg. I'm with Americans for Prosperity Florida. I just wanted to thank you, Chair Miller, for your very thoughtful proposal today. I think it is in the best interest of all of our community for us to focus solely on getting through this medical and economic crisis. I think what we should emphasize most here is, even once we get through this, the, the medical portion truly of this crisis, we don't know how long the economic ramifications are going to come, or how long those economic ramifications are going to last, and, you know, I think it's, I think it is very wise and thinking very far ahead to put this off till at least January two thousand twenty-one, before we even consider this, so we can get a much better idea of where we actually stand, uh, as a community in recovering from this issue. So, uh, in closing, I just want to thank you once again, Chair Miller, and I want to thank you, Commissioner Merman, for your second in just pushing this off, uh, further down the road until we're able to really have a much better i-idea of how we're going to come out of this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Gwen Myers?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Can you hear me, Chairman Miller?
Yes.
Can you hear me, Chairman Miller?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Hello?
Ms. Myers, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Ms. Myers. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Gwen Myers, Tampa. As an early supporter and volunteer with All For Transportation ballot issues to fund transportation and transit need in November two thousand eighteen, today I ask you as Commissioners to do the will of the voters and hold a public meeting on April fifteenth and place the transportation tax under November ballot. This transportation tax is critical for our county to sustain its future transportation plan. Thank you, and this is Gwen Myers.
Thank you. We had two more people to sign up that I got an email from. Uh, Elaine Collazo? C-O-L-L-A-Z-O?
Commissioner Miller, were you able to hear my comments?
Yes, ma'am, I was. Elaine Collazo, C-O-L-L-A-Z-O? Our last speaker is Neil Costantino? Neil Costantino?
Charlotte Greenberg also wanted to be heard, and I'll mute my phone again.
Who was that? I'm sorry, I didn't get the name. Someone, uh, James, Mr. Brewer, could you tell me who that was?
It was Tom Rask speaking, and the person who wanted to speak is named Charlotte Greenberg or Greenberg. She's on the phone, but I, I don't want to insert myself into the meeting, so I'll mute my phone again. Just for the record, want to make sure you know she wanted to speak.
Well, let me ask this question. We had a cutoff time, Mr. Brewer, did Charlotte Greenberg sign up before one o'clock?
No, sir. Charlotte Greenberg did not sign in before one o'clock.
So therefore, she was not, she would not be able to speak. We had a time cutoff of one o'clock. Okay, that is the public comment. Uh, we're now back on...
Chair, this is Commissioner Overman. Before you close public comment, I'd like to make a request of the clerk.
Pardon me?
Before we close the public comment, I'd like to make a request of the clerk and that the person that is actually managing those that we had signed up to speak, and you confirm that those people that actually signed up to speak were actually online and/or were able to speak, because I'm getting Facebook messages from, uh, several people on the list that have indicated, "We're here, we're muted, we can't speak."
Mr. Brewer, would you answer that question?
Yes, sir. So the answer to that question is, when they signed up, they were required to provide a phone number. That provided phone number must be called into the conference bridge and recognized in order for them to be unmuted. If any of our citizens provided a phone number when they signed up and called in on a different number during the meeting, there is no way for me to recognize them as that phone number, and in turn, they were not unmuted.
Did I answer the question?
Thank you. Sean has called in on that, yes, and Sean has called in using that now, number now that he knows. Thank you, Sean has called in on that, yes, and Sean has called in using that now, number now that he knows that that was the requirement, thank you.
Okay. Well, um, we've, we've, we've gone through thirty people that was signed up, twenty-nine people that signed up to speak, and I called a number of times, I, I don't know what else we can do as far as public comment goes. I, we, we've exhausted public comment time now, and now move into board discussion on the motion that I made. I'm gonna turn the gavel back over to the Vice Chair for board discussion and action on the motion, Commissioner Overman, you now have the chair.
Thank you, Chair, um, who would like to speak first?
Commissioner Smith.
Is there any discussion of the motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith is recognized.
Thank you, um, first I'd like to ask our county attorney a question, please, and, and then I have comments. So my question is, can, and can you hear me?
Yes, you can, go ahead.
Yeah, okay, so my question for the county attorney, if we take this, if we were to defer this today because of several reasons, and take this up at our next regular board meeting on April fifteenth, will we still have time to schedule a hearing on April fifteenth for a, a date that would still get us into making the OPAGA deadline? If that was the will of the board at that time?
Yes, Commissioner, this is Christine Beck, and the, I believe, we have, we have previously provided the date of May seventh as being the absolute latest date for the submitting the ordinance to the state pursuit for, in order to have the OPAGA audit. And then the other timelines that are, are relevant here is that once the board provides direction, if they were to provide direction to set a public hearing, we need to have a, a minimum of ten days of advanced public notice advertising that public hearing, so those are the, the two most critical timelines.
So do I understand you to say that, yes, if we did this April fifteenth in the morning, we would still have time? Y- yes or no?
You mean if you had the public hearing on April fifteenth?
No, if we deferred this question about whether or not to set a public hearing till April fifteenth at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, would we, would there still be time to get it, and, and to set a hearing for, you know, some date after that? And still make the OPAGA?
Yes, cuz that would give you your ten, ten-day timeframe to hold the public hearing.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a few comments, and I'm gonna make a substitute motion that we do that. First, I'd like to point out that, um, I, well, first of all, this meeting has had its glitches, obviously. We had thirty people sign up for public comment, and there's half of them we haven't been able to hear from because of their glitch, the glitches involved. And, um, so I think this meeting really needs to be, this decision really needs that public discussion and another opportunity for public discussion before we vote on deferring it to another year. Um, I would, I would point out that I agree with the speaker who said, well, anyway, I, it's my position that I think we all should consider whether or not we need this more than ever today, more than ever after this financial crisis is over. Once we see how long or short this crisis lasts, how deep and broad it is, uh, we can better assess whether or not we need this, let me put it that way. That, if we, if we took a little more time, we could better assess whether this is a good time to put this on the ballot, whether or not we need this, how badly, even if, even if we've had a financial crisis, we may still need this more than ever to help create jobs and ensure our vulnerable workers have transportation available so that they have a reliable means to get back to work, those who cannot afford a car, um, and, and, and those who are taking their kids to school. So, we may find, uh, in future consideration that, that we actually need this for reasons we hadn't considered yet. And the hearing that we are considering setting is just the next step necessary to keep our options open while we digest the depth and breadth of this financial crisis, while we come to a better understanding of where we're, where we might be and what, what the citizens may or may not want us to do with this. Setting a hearing for April just takes, keeps our options open, so we can have a new referendum ready if, if the court strikes down the referendum that was already approved by the voters, that the money's already being collected. And then, so, so we need to have this hearing, I think, just so we have all our options open. And if we decide later on in the year that the time is not right, the economy is not right, the citizens do not want us to put this on the ballot in November twenty twenty, we have the option to pull it back. But, but today, my motion is to keep those options alive, keep all our options open while we assess our position, and take up this question about setting a public hearing for the referendum at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, April fifteenth, at nine, at ten AM.
Second.
Okay, so Commissioner Smith has made a motion, and Commissioner Kemp, I'm sorry, the substitute motion, and Commissioner Kemp has seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, this is Commissioner Kemp.
This is Commissioner Miller. I would ask you not to do that, I would ask you not to support this motion. Uh, I, I understand what Commissioner Smith is saying, I would agree with it. Uh, now is not the time to even be considering having a public hearing for taxes, to raise taxes. Now is not the time to have any kind of public hearing for even raising fees. I'm gonna repeat myself, people are hurting and they're going to hurt worse. If this state, which I'm hearing the governor's gonna do, is put us in a stay-at-home for the next thirty days, even more people are gonna lose their jobs, and we don't know when we're gonna even be able to recover from this. We don't know what our budgets are gonna look like, we understa- I understand that. But we're putting a burden, looking at putting a burden on people that this could very well end up going on for the next five, six, seven months. And we're asking people to consider adding a tax on to other burdens that they have. Again, I'll repeat myself, maybe you haven't been through this, but I have, today is April first. Grits due, mortgages are due, car payments due, child supports due, all these other things are due, and people don't have jobs. And guess what, May first, June first, July first, August first, as we go over this pandemic and it gets worse, the same thing is gonna happen. So I don't think we need to be having any type of public hearing to talk about raising any tax or raising any fees, at least until January first, twenty twenty-one. Now, as far as putting something on another county commission, more county commission, this happens all the time, so that argument is flawed. So I'm asking you, please, please do not support the substitute motion.
This is Commissioner Kemp.
Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I do think this is a, um, a good substitute motion, and I, I appreciate all the reasons that Commissioner Smith put forward. I think it's very important to be thinking about the future. First of all, um, we still have an opportunity to discuss this in two weeks and to consider, um, the future. This vote, this, this does not need, even if we supported this and moved through with it, we would, could decide to not put it on the ballot come August if it's, um, not reasonable. But if we don't do this, we don't have that option in the future. We don't know what the future is gonna look like, but we will have a lot of people hurting for it, absolutely sure. And one of the reasons they're hurting is they're already hurting incredibly in Hillsborough County because of a lack of resources, um, especially for the most underfunded transit system in the nation by a long shot. And people will not be able to get to work, and our economy won't be able to repair in the ways that it could. As Commissioner Smith pointed out, this tax is already being collected, it would simply, Plan B back up. We do not have to put this on the ballot come August, but if, if we did and the voters didn't support it, then, you know, that, that is, gives them an opportunity also, although they did support it fifty-seven percent, uh, prior. Um, I think this is a very important option for us to continue to have. Um, there's no reason to shut it down at this moment as a possibility to help us recover. And it's very important to note that in the federal dollars that have been approved, the trillions that they put in, a big allocation for transit that wasn't originally gonna go there. And if we do not have our, if we are not lashing that allocation, if we are not able to do that, we will not, once again, be able to bring down the federal dollars that the state in our region deserves to make sure that people can get back and forth to work, important appointments. Um, and I think that, or that, that, that those who use transit notes who need these options are going to be the most needed um, when we come forward, uh, and, and look at things again. But we have our, this is simply providing for the audit and simply providing us so that we can keep our options open to August. So I appreciate the motion to continue, and then, uh, if we can move this along, we have options open in August to look at what is, um, the, you know, what we should be doing. Um, so I'm in support, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp, um, any other comments for any other speakers, or the board members? Uh, not hearing any, um, I'd like to make a comment and ask the, on the attorney a question. Um, one, uh, as it pertains to the motion of putting it off until, uh, the fifteenth, as far as setting a hearing, um, I'd like our county attorney to address the fact that we have had people that were signed up to speak uh, that were unable to actually participate in this meeting, although they were on a line, um, and they were not told ahead of time they needed to call from the number of which they dialed, or at least it wasn't on the website. I'm concerned about those individuals, but I also didn't, and so I'll, I'll allow the, the county attorney to answer that question. But before I do, I also didn't hear a lot of people make comments about, you know, people hurting and not being able to pay a tax. They're already paying. We are going through the steps of preserving a tax that our citizens voted on already, and they're already paying. This is to keep the, the, um, public hearing in place, and it's not a new tax, it's not an additional tax, it's to preserve the sales tax the citizens of Hillsborough County voted on. So, the, the statement that, you know, people are hurting and they're unable to, we don't know where we're going with this, they're already paying the tax. This measure is to make sure that we're able to actually spend the tax that we've been paying and our citizens are paying in the way of which they asked us to spend it in the, you know, previously, with some minor changes. So, I would like to ask the county attorney to address the issue of, of citizens' comments and, and support the motion with the idea that we have a better setup for the April fifteenth hearing.
Hello, Commissioner, this is Mary Helen Faris, and my understanding, um, at the beginning is that there were several citizens that signed up, um, their phone number, but they provided written comments, and my understanding is that those are being provided to the commissioners. Uh, this maybe not have been a perfect process, but given the technology and the exigent circumstances, we're doing the very best we can. So, I think those comments could be made part of this record, uh, the written comments.
Okay. Any other board member comment?
Commissioner Smith.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry, I think there's a, a delay. Um, I have not seen the emails, I've seen a couple of emailed comments, but I believe that there are over ten people who signed up to speak who've been trying to get on, who have not been able to speak because they didn't understand the system, because the system is, um, kind of hinky. Um, and if they've sent written comments, I may or may not have seen them all in, in, as part of the public comment as it relates to this, uh, these motions that we're discussing, neither one of which, by the way, were on a published agenda, okay? So the topic was on the published agenda, these motions are flying around. We haven't seen, uh, all the public comment that people have been signed up to, to present. And, um, I think that that's in and of itself a very good reason to defer this item to our next regularly scheduled board meeting. When I, I understand, and I've spoken with people in communications and, uh, technology, and I understand that they're in line to have a much better system in place for our board meeting on April fifteenth. And I think we should decide this matter when we have a better system in place, uh, to accommodate the speakers, as well as, um, uh, underlining the point that nothing we do can, can put a tax on the people. All we can ever do is ask the voters to, to confirm or affirm, uh, what they've already affirmed. But we can ask them if they've changed their mind, we can put it to a vote. Um, but, of course, setting the hearing is only the next step forward in preserving the options. And we could always decide not to even put it on the ballot at a later date when we have a better sense of what our situation is and what the economy is, and how badly we need the, uh, transportation that would be provided and, and funded by this, uh, sales tax that people are already paying now. That's my, end of my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith, and to, um, the earlier speaker, we have not gotten the public comments that were sent in by the callers at this point. So I'm gonna ask the county attorney to address our, either of the two motions that are under consideration when public comment has not been offered to those that actually did sign up and may have emailed, and we have not yet gotten those emails prior to this vote.
This is Mary Helen again, um, I don't know if the staff person who had, was on the, who had mentioned that there were some written comments that it was, and I'm paraphrasing what he said, that he did not think they were going to be verbal. I don't know if he's still on the call, uh, James?
Yes, I am on the call. Those comments have been come, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Those comments are still coming in and getting compiled. Everything that we had received up until one o'clock was sent out to the commissioners, Christine Beck. Anything that has come in since the meeting started, we are compiling and will send out as, as soon as the meeting concludes, or if you would like them, we can send them out now.
Send them out, I'd send them out as soon as you get them.
We will begin sending them out as soon as they come in. So, just to be clear, we are receiving public comment via email even after the public comment section begins?
Yes.
Understood, we will start to send them over.
Thank you for sending those over. Given that they signed up to speak, I'm gonna, again, as the county attorney, is it appropriate to move forward given that we have not completed the public comment review?
I think you can continue to move forward and discuss the motions, and as these comments are submitted, um, they, they could be read into the record, or you could read them, um, yourself, yeah, for the first time, and, and just, you, I think you can consider, continue your discussion, um, as these comments come in. I mean, you might be getting public comments or comments well after the meeting is concluded as well.
Um, this is, this is Commissioner Miller.
Commissioner Miller, you're recognized.
So, Ms., Ms., is that Ms. Faris?
Yes.
So you're saying we're not gonna take a vote on either the substitute? So you're saying we're not going to take a vote on either the substitute motion or the motion until all of these comments that were written come in?
No, sir, no, sir. I, I, I wasn't clear enough. I think you can, you can continue debating the motions and continue doing that as the comments come in. My understanding is staff is getting those too.
So we can go ahead now and vote on the substitute motion and the motion?
I believe you can, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments, we'll call the vote on the substitute motion. Mr. Smith, do you want to restate your motion?
I would, um, I was asking to defer, my motion is to defer this. I would ask the county attorney, just to make sure I'm using the right language, whether it should be defer or continue, but the idea is to take up this, put this decision off today and take it up at our next regularly scheduled board meeting, um, which is April 15th at nine, in our, um, at that board meeting, on that agenda. Is that, is that a- Yeah, so let me ask the, the attorney, is it, should it be deferred? Should we continue? Do I need to put a time in there? But that's my, my motion, the gist of my motion.
Yes, Commissioner, because we're not opening and continuing a public hearing, I think your, the intent of your motion is clear, and you're, you're asking that this item be continued so that it can be brought up on April 15th, um, at 10:00 AM to consider setting a public hearing at that time.
Thank you. That's my motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
Substitute motion, substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Thank, thank you. A substitute motion, uh, in a second, uh, please call the rope.
Ellen?
Can't hear you.
Ellen, your vote?
Did you call my name?
Yes, there.
No.
Hagan?
No.
Kemp?
Yes.
Berman?
No.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wait.
No.
Voting failed three to four with Commissioners Miller, Merman, um, Merman, White, and Hagan voting no.
We return back to the initial motion by Commissioner Miller.
Seconded by Commissioner Merman.
Seconded by Commissioner Merman. Is there any further discussion? Let's call the vote. On the motion?
Yes. Hagan?
Yes.
Kemp?
No.
Berman?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three with Commissioners Kemp, Overman, and Smith voting no.
Thank you, members. Appreciate that very much. Um, is there any other business to come before us today? Any other business to come before us today? Therefore, we adjourn.